Years ago, there was some people.
Yeah, there's football game tonight, too. JV, I don't know if it's Bel Air, they play Bel Air Friday, and then they didn't play Saturday, so Bel Air had, I think it was Bel Air coming to Cambridge tonight. JV.
Right down where the steps are at, coming off South Gate. They're gonna be parking on the wrong side of the street.
Yeah.
I got a, maybe, about, I win.
I did too, Kim.
I win. Now I'm getting a weekly thing. You're, you've used one dollar less this week. Yeah, you've used one dollar less this week. Yeah.
Doesn't matter that you increased.
There's a weekly.
Five.
You want to see it every week?
Did you get it every week?
Every week.
Yeah, so do I.
And they never did anything wrong.
It's like, the first one I got, I'm like.
That's what's trying to make me feel, raising, they're raising.
There's no sidewalk, huh?
Yes. It's like one-fourth the bill every week.
I don't know, at one time we talked about doing like a, for Hardscape, if they did a Hardscape, then it would be fine.
And then I think the last one I got said, your bill's projected to be sixty-seven dollars next month.
Never been anywhere after that, so.
Ready? You're right.
No junior?
Yeah, it's six, yeah, pass.
All right, let's do it then, we got a lot of work to do tonight. Cambridge City Council is now in session, please rise for the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Almighty God, our Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for all that are here today, we ask your protection upon us, we ask for wisdom as we make decisions for the city. And, uh, Lord, we just ask for your guidance in all the affairs that we get into, and I pray that, uh, through the actions of the administration and council, we will make this city the best, the best place to live at Jesus' name.
Let's reason to the lie of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Conaway?
Here.
Evancho?
Here.
Loffman? McMillan?
Here.
Mauer?
Here.
Wolverton?
Here.
Zaleski?
Here.
Mike? Got you. Johnny?
I make a motion, we, uh, excuse Councilman, uh, Loffman?
Okay, and Steve?
Second to motion.
Okay, um, um, let's go ahead and vote on that. Uh, all those in favor saying five to say an aye?
Aye.
Just have that, and, uh...
Reading of the amendments, uh, dispense and place on file?
Mike?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I just have that, and we'll move on to mayor's report tonight. Oh my gosh.
I guess I gotta memorize, I don't have any. Uh, actually, I gave you so many the last trip around, I'm just glad we, hey, we keep up what we got going out there, and that's debatable, depending on who you talk to. But, um, I just thought I'd show up tonight and say hi, and, um, a lot of things going on, and I don't have any, no report of any kind. But if you have any questions, I'll tell you the best answer I got.
Yeah, and do you have any questions for the mayor?
Oh, ask, have you gotten any response or anything on the cleanup? I had got, I've still got.
I'm gonna say like five or six.
Okay, good.
At this point, all of them have, as far as I know, have been addressed and scheduled.
Good, good, 'cause I've gotten, I passed the information on as best as I could.
I think we had one that needed help getting it out of the car, and the other, other than that, the rest are, it's pretty smooth so far.
Good, good, thank you.
Any else have anything for the mayor tonight? Well, you got up easy tonight, yeah, thank you, mayor. Okay, and I don't think we have anything from the city attorney tonight, and how about communications?
I have a request from the municipal court for, uh, transfer of funds within their budget.
Okay. Tim?
Uh, motion to refer to finance committee?
John?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just have that.
And a transfer request from our auditor.
I'll do Tim.
Yes, motion to refer to finance committee?
John?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just carry that as well.
And I have monthly reports, I have the park board minutes from August, and the municipal court August monthly report.
Kim?
Have to place on file, motion?
Right.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I just carry that as well. That's it for that? Well, moving right on. Okay, that's good with, uh, reports and committees.
Okay, sit back, I'm gonna let you.
Yeah.
All right.
Report of finance committee, September the fifteenth, we recommend that council adopt a resolution accepting the amounts and rates from the budget commission.
Any questions on that report? Hearing none?
Report of finance committee, September the fifteenth, we recommend that council amend chapter thirty-five of the codified ordinances of the city of Cambridge relating to personnel.
Any questions on that report? Hearing none?
Report of finance committee, September the fifteenth, we recommend that the following transfers and appropriations be approved, appropriate thirty thousand dollars to police salaries, appropriate twenty thousand dollars to police K nine, transfer two thousand dollars from EMS rents and leases to vehicle maintenance, transfer one thousand eight hundred dollars from park supplies to clothing allowance, transfer one thousand dollars from community development advertising to services by contract, transfer five thousand dollars from cemetery fund replacement over five thousand dollars to replacement under five thousand dollars, transfer forty thousand dollars from sewer operation and maintenance salaries to fuel and light, transfer fifteen thousand dollars from sewer operation and maintenance supplies to fuel and light, transfer forty-five thousand dollars from sewer operation and maintenance utility line to fuel and light, transfer twenty thousand dollars from sewer operation and maintenance supplies to miscellaneous services, appropriate one hundred fifty thousand dollars to consultants, appropriate one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars to sewer replacement fund capital improvements.
Any questions on that report? Hearing none?
Report of finance committee, September the fifteenth, we recommend that council authorizes the mayor to recover unclaimed funds on behalf of the city of Cambridge.
Any questions on that report?
I'm sorry, that's the auditor, not the mayor.
Uh-oh, start over. All right, any questions on that report? Hearing none?
Report of finance committee, September the fifteenth, we recommend that council authorize the administration to advertise for bids and award the gazebo project.
Any questions on that report? Hearing none?
Report of finance committee, September the fifteenth, we recommend that council authorize the administration to apply for and accept funds from the Ohio Public Works Commission.
Any questions on that report? Hearing none?
Report of finance committee, September the fifteenth, we recommend that council authorize the administration to apply for and accept funds from the land and water grant funds.
Any questions on that report? Hearing none?
Report of finance committee, September the fifteenth, we recommend that council authorize the administration to apply for and accept funds from Muskingham Watershed Conservancy District.
Okay, any questions on that report? Hearing none?
Report of finance committee, September the fifteenth, we recommend that ca, that council authorize the administration to apply for and accept funds from recreational trail funds.
Any questions on that report? Hearing none?
Report of finance committee, September the fifteenth, we recommend that council authorize the administration to apply for and accept funds from CDBG Neighborhood Revitalization Grant Funds.
Any questions on that report? Hearing none?
Report of finance committee, September the fifteenth, we recommend that council authorize the administration to apply for and accept funds from Mayor's Partnership for Progress Grant.
Any questions on that report? Hearing none?
Report of finance committee, September the fifteenth, we recommend that council authorize the administration to solicit local funds.
Any questions on that report? Hearing none?
Report of finance committee, September the fifteenth, we recommend that council authorize the mayor to execute the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant.
Any questions on that report? Hearing none?
Report of finance committee, September the fifteenth, we recommend that council authorize the mayor to execute the Roadwork Development six-two-nine grant.
Any questions on that report? Hearing none?
Report of finance committee, September the fifteenth, we recommend that council authorize the mayor to execute the ODOT Jobs and Commerce Grant.
Any questions on that report? Hearing none?
Report of finance committee, September the fifteenth, we recommend that council authorize the administration to submit an EPA Emerging Containment Application.
Any questions on that report? Hearing none?
Report of finance committee, September the fifteenth, we recommend that council authorize the administration to advertise for and award bids for Edgeworth Avenue, Eighth Street Road, Will's Creek Valley Drive Project.
Any questions on that report? Hearing none?
Report of finance committee, September the fifteenth, we recommend that council authorize the administration to submit a CDBG Critical Infrastructure Grant Application.
Any questions on that report? Hearing none?
Report of finance committee, September the fifteenth, we recommend that council authorize the administration to enter into an agreement with US Bridge for Wheeling Avenue Extension.
All right, any questions on that report? Hearing none? All right, that was easy.
First step.
All right, everything on unfinished business tonight? I don't think so, and, uh, we'll move on to audience portion, if anybody would like to come forward and, uh, speak, please come up, uh, state your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes to, uh, uh, speak, more if deemed necessary.
This thing on, oh yeah, there we go. Hello, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jasper Carroll, I reside at fifteen twelve Blaine Avenue here in Cambridge. I am here, first off, on behalf of a friend of mine, his name is Toby, he is a truck driver, so he's not able to be here himself, so I'm gonna do my best to represent him and his cars for a cause, uh, that's coming up here on Saturday. Uh, before I start on that, I would also be remiss if I did not mention that I am selling raffle tickets for the Habitat for Humanity Silent Auction, which is also Saturday.
Yeah.
Uh, the quarter auction will be, I think it's ten-thirty, but during that time, there will also be a silent auction, so if anybody would like to purchase raffle tickets, I have some of those available, and they will be for the silent auction. So I'll move on to the main point while I'm here, um, like I mentioned, Cars for a Cause, uh, this is the first year for the event, I am not one of the organizers, I have been involved as far as, uh, doing promotional work on social media and being a sponsor, uh, so I'll do my best to kinda explain some things, uh, it's my understanding that the mayor will be in attendance, I believe he's going to help us out with passing out awards. So registration for the car show starts at nine AM, it goes to eleven, uh, there is no registration fee, so everything for this event is by donation. So there's no set registration fee for anybody that wants to show their vehicle or motorcycle, there's no set fee for anybody that wants to be a sponsor, it's all voluntary and it's all by donation, so if people wanna bring canned food or any other non-perishable food items, they can use that to pay for their donation, or they can donate in cash. Uh, overall, cash donations are better, uh, from what I've learned from Grace Pantry and Feed My People, they can do more with the money than they can with the actual donations of food, because of the, what they get charged by the Ohio Food Bank is much better than, of course, what you would pay in a grocery store, so apples to apples, it's better for them to have the money to purchase it through the Ohio Food Bank than for the donations themselves. There will be a fifty-fifty raffle, judging's gonna start at noon, and I mentioned that, uh, our mayor is going to be present for that, uh, we do have donations for door prizes, uh, I'm not sure what all they are, but there, there are several. Uh, we do have several local businesses that have committed to be cash, uh, cash sponsors as well. The trophy presentation will start at two PM, um, and from what I understand, we will have some different vehicles that you might not usually see at a car show, there's going to be, uh, some law enforcement and first responders, and I believe there's gonna be a large, either, I can't remember, it's either a train, uh, crane, or, uh, a fire truck, I can't remember which one they're gonna use, but there's gonna be a, a very large American flag on display. Um, but the main reason that we're doing this, like I mentioned before, is to support local food banks, so I just wanna give you a little idea of what, um, what they're up against. And you may be familiar with the Grace Pantry, they have been around, she told me since nineteen eighty-eight, uh, but it stands for the Guernsey Resource Association for Community Enrichment, and some of the numbers that she gave me, uh, and she explained that they only track the numbers of people that come for, uh, the food distribution day, where they get basically two weeks worth of food at a time, uh, but they do have people that come in periodically for emergencies, so those, those aren't tracked as, as closely, uh, but just last month, they served four hundred and thirty-one families, which totaled one thousand and sixty-seven people, and a total of twelve thousand eight hundred and four meals, and that was just last month. For both Grace Pantry and Feed My People, it seems like the largest barrier that they have to serving the community is transportation. If people need resources from those food banks, they have to be able to get to the food bank themselves, so if they don't have a car, or they can't, I guess even, they can take a seat bus to get there, but once they have all their stuff, the seat bus won't take them home with all their stuff. So the numbers that I'm giving are actually much lower than what the overall need is because of the, because of some of the barriers that people have to get to the food bank. Um, they do serve mainly elderly and homeless, and I, from what she explained to me, um, with the winter, the winter months coming up, the elderly are going to be, um, more in need, because they tend to try to spend their money on their utilities in the winter versus feeding themselves, they, they don't wanna keep the lights and the heat on, and, and don't take care of themselves as far as their groceries are concerned, so they have more, will have more of a need coming up in, in the winter months for those. Um, and just some numbers from Feed My People, let's see, they did fourteen thousand seven hundred and forty-six, this is for the, for the whole year so far, a total of fourteen thousand seven hundred and forty-six people served, and a total of thirty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-eight meals. And these are just Grace Pantry and Feed My People, this isn't all the other food banks that are, that are available in the area with some of the different churches and things, so, um, it's my understanding, especially over the last, pretty much since COVID, so over the last like five or so years, the need and the demand on the food banks has been increasing a lot every year. So like I said, the, the main, the main goal of the car show, and it, this is just the first event, uh, we are looking at scheduling, it may not be car shows, but it'll still be under the name Cars for a Cause, so we are looking at scheduling some more events throughout the year, and, uh, yeah, hopefully, we'll be able to raise, raise some money and some awareness for the food banks and, and help the, the needy get some, get some meals in them.
I have two questions for you.
Yes, sir.
Um, so, the location for the, uh, car show, where would that?
It is going to be at the Pritchard Lofflin Civic Center.
It's gonna be at the Civic Center.
Yeah, and I know there's a lot going on this coming Saturday, like, so I, I have three events that I'm, I'm expected to be at myself.
And, um, for a good, is there a phone number you'd like to give out if somebody would like to purchase tickets, uh, that may not be here?
For the Habitat for Humanity?
Yeah.
Yes, I can give you my, my phone number.
If you'd like to just give that out?
It's seven four zero?
Okay.
Nine nine five?
Okay.
Zero three one six.
One six, okay.
And then all, all of the other, uh, board members from the Habitat for Humanity have tickets also, so if you know anybody else that's involved with that organization, you can contact them as well.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Good, well, thank you for coming tonight.
All right, thank you.
We'll give you some airtime.
Good luck.
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes, absolutely, okay, hmm, I don't think we have any new business tonight, do we? Okay, let's move on to ordinances and resolutions, here we go.
Here we go.
Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies, and certifying them to the county auditor.
Okay, Brian?
Motion to suspend.
Kim?
Second to suspend.
Okay, roll call.
Mauer?
Yes.
Evancho?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Zaleski?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Steve?
Motion to pass.
Second to motion to pass.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Evancho?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Zaleski?
Yes.
Mauer?
Yes.
An ordinance amending chapter thirty-five of the codified ordinances for the city of Cambridge, Ohio relating to personnel.
Brian?
Motion to suspend.
Kim?
Second to suspend.
Roll call.
Evancho?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Mauer?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
Zaleski?
Yes. John?
Motion to pass.
Steve?
Second to pass.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Mauer?
Yes.
Evancho?
Yes.
Zaleski?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
That motion is declared adopted.
And ordinance of transfers and appropriations.
Sounds like I get caught up here. Okay, Brian?
Motion to suspend.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
All right, well, let's work the table on both sides. All right, roll call.
Zaleski?
Yes.
Evancho?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
Mauer?
Yes.
Kim?
Motion to pass.
John?
Second to pass.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to the roll call.
Mauer?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Evancho?
Yes.
Zaleski?
Yes. All right. And, uh... What did we just do? I'm signing papers, I lost my, I lost my train. Do we need a motion to pass or a motion? Motion to pass.
We haven't got there yet.
Okay.
I was just waiting on you to tell me to go.
Let's go, yeah.
And ordinance authorizing the auditor to recover unclaimed funds on behalf of the city of Cambridge.
All right, Brian, you're back up.
Motion to suspend.
Second to suspend.
All right, roll call.
Mauer?
Yes.
Evancho?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Zaleski?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes. All right, Steve?
Motion to pass.
Mike?
Second to pass.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Evancho?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Zaleski?
Yes.
Mauer?
Yes.
All right, that motion is declared adopted.
And ordinance authorizing the administration to advertise for bids and award the gazebo project.
Brian?
Motion to suspend.
Second to suspend.
All right, roll call.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Mauer?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
Evancho?
Yes.
Zaleski?
Yes. Steve?
Motion to pass.
Kim?
All second to motion to pass.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Zaleski?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Evancho?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
Mauer?
Yes.
All right, and that motion is declared adopted.
And ordinance authorizing the administration to apply for and accept funds from the Ohio Public Works Commission.
Brian?
Motion to suspend.
Second to suspend.
Roll call.
Evancho?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Mauer?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
Zaleski?
Yes.
Motion to pass?
Mike?
Second to pass.
Any discussion on that one? Hearing none, roll call.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Mauer?
Yes.
Evancho?
Yes.
Zaleski?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes. And that motion is declared adopted.
And ordinance authorizing the administration to apply for and accept funds from land and water grant funds.
Brian?
Motion to suspend.
Second to suspend.
Roll call.
Zaleski?
Yes.
Evancho?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
Mauer?
Yes.
Kim?
Motion to pass.
Mike?
Second to pass.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mauer?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Evancho?
Yes.
Zaleski?
Yes. And that motion is declared adopted.
And ordinance authorizing the administration to apply for and accept funds from Muskingham Watershed Conservancy District.
Brian?
Motion to suspend.
Second to suspend.
Roll call.
Mauer?
Yes.
Evancho?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Zaleski?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes. Steve?
Motion to pass.
John?
Second to pass.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Evancho?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Zaleski?
Yes.
Mauer?
Yes.
That motion is declared adopted.
And ordinance authorizing the administration to apply for and accept funds from recreational trail funds.
Brian?
Motion to suspend.
Second to suspend.
Roll call.
Conaway?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Zaleski?
Yes.
Evancho?
Yes.
Mauer?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes. Kim?
Motion to pass.
Steve?
Second to pass.
Any discussion? Hearing that, roll call.
Zaleski?
Yes.
Evancho?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
Mauer?
Yes.
And that motion is declared adopted.
And ordinance authorizing the administration to apply for and accept funds from CDBG Neighborhood Revitalization Grant.
Brian?
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Roll call.
Mauer.
Yes.
Evancho.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Zaleski.
Yes.
Conaway.
Yes.
Woberton.
Yes.
Motion to pass?
Mike?
Second to pass.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Evancho.
Yes.
Woberton.
Yes.
Conaway.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Zaleski.
Yes.
Mauer.
Yes.
And ordinance authorizing the administration to apply for and accept funds from Mayor's Partnership for Progress Grant.
Brian?
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Roll call.
Woberton.
Yes.
Mauer.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Conaway.
Yes.
Evancho.
Yes.
Zaleski.
Yes. Steve?
Motion to pass.
Second to pass.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Zaleski.
Yes.
Woberton.
Yes.
Evancho.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Conaway.
Yes.
Mauer.
Yes.
And ordinance authorizing the administration to solicit local funds.
Brian?
Motion to suspend.
Second to suspend.
All right, roll call.
Zaleski.
Yes.
Conaway.
Yes.
Mauer.
Yes.
Woberton.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Evancho.
Yes.
Motion to pass.
Mike?
Second to pass.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Evancho.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Woberton.
Yes.
Mauer.
Yes.
Conaway.
Yes.
Zaleski.
Yes.
And ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant.
Brian?
Motion to suspend.